Welcome to the Westford Public Schools School Committee meeting for Monday, March 22nd, 2021. This is one of our off weeks, kind of a budget focused meeting. We will have some brief informational updates on other topic, but it is primarily budget focused this evening. Per usual, you can view this meeting on Zoom or on Westford Cat streaming or on Westford Cat Public Television. The airtable is open for comment. Friendly reminder that all comments or questions in airtable are part of the public record. This is primarily a budget meeting. You may put in questions on other topics, but I cannot guarantee that we'll be able to address those this evening since this is primarily a budget focused meeting. But we do have some other informational updates and for you, and for that I will start with Superintendent Olson.
Thank you. We had a well attended COVID forum last night. We held it from seven o'clock till I think we ended up just about eight twenty. We had our four COVID Advisory Committee physicians, Dr. Michelle Travosos, Dr. Joan Egan, Dr. Jim Sheehy, and Dr. Andrew Papelka, who participated along with all of our school nurses, and I want to thank all of them for their participation, for the answers, for some of the information that they provided. I want to thank all of the community members also who participated last night and also who sent in questions in advance. I hope it was helpful to you. There was some valuable information presented and I hope people feel a little bit more comfortable about the return to school. We have a finance committee meeting coming up this Thursday evening. It's the first meeting of two with the Joint Finance Committee and Select Board. It is an annual meeting where they review our budget with us and ask questions so that we will answer. We have answered a number of their questions, virtually all of their questions, along with I think almost all of the school committee members' questions also about the fiscal 22 budget. We are planning, very actively planning for the opening of school. We have a shipment of furniture coming in that will allow us to help keep students, particularly at the K to two level, where they have trapezoidal tables and round tables, safe, distanced in the one direction. And so we're expecting that in the beginning to middle of next week. And schools have been alerted to position that furniture appropriately as needed by the school's respective administration. We will be sending out information on the school reopening. I'm going to coordinate that with the principals on operational and logistical issues. That will be coming out very, very shortly. And I want to thank you once again, committee members for the rigorous process that you engaged in in finding our next superintendent of schools. I think it was a very successful process. Wonderful outcome in that we know Dr. Chu. He has been a terrific member of our leadership team. And you know, I don't want to steal Alicia's thunder because I think you're going to give kind of a wrap up of that, but I think it was an excellent, excellent process and served the school system very well. And that is it.
Thank you, Bill. Any assistant superintendent update?
Yes, just briefly, I'd like to thank you, thank the families again who completed the survey that was due last Tuesday. The principals are sifting through all of the data and we did have close to 100% participation. And at some schools, it was up near 110 and 120% participation. I think some people were just anxious and making sure that they did in fact complete it, so that it was completed more than once. And sometimes there were families who changed their mind over the course of the period where the survey was opened. So principals are just going through and reconciling any inconsistencies. And I will share the details of the data hopefully at our next meeting, just so that you all have an idea of the numbers and how many students are returning from our LA and vice versa, who will be shifting from what is currently hybrid and will be a full return out to our LA. But I know that there's a lot of anxious families who are wondering if their child or children will be impacted by any shifting of classrooms, of teachers. And some communication has already started and we're hoping at the elementary level in particular that that communication will take place over the course of this week as the principals continue to shift, make the appropriate shifts and put students in the classrooms in a way that allow for the numbers to work, the services to work, and all of those other variables that they have to consider when they're doing placements. So hang tight and that information will be coming to families soon if it hasn't already.
Great. Thank you very much, Carrie, and thank you to the whole leadership team for, I know, all the work that is going into these preparations. I know we have a couple of school committee updates as well. I think Alicia, you've got the first one.
So no thunder stealing whatsoever. I would be surprised if anyone in Westford does not actually know, but the school committee did unanimously vote to appoint Dr. Christopher Chu as our next superintendent of schools. Thank you again to everyone who was involved. I know that a lot of people have some questions about what does transition look like? And you'll be hearing more about that in the next couple of weeks. Prior to even making the decision, Superintendent Olson and Assistant Superintendent Cleary had already reached out to us about how to make that process smooth. We have been talking to Dr. Chu. Everyone is talking to each other and we are very fortunate that we know all the players. So that will make this process a little bit easier. So congratulations again to Dr. Chu and thank you to everyone involved. And we look forward to working together in the future. That's all.
One other point I will add on that is we have had a couple of inquiries from the press and others about the official approval of a contract. The way this process works is we have informally offered the position. Dr. Chu has enthusiastically accepted and now we're going through the process of finalizing these contract terms. Once that is settled, that will come back and of course will be absolutely publicly agreed to and voted upon at a future school committee meeting because all of those details are public information, but we just have to work through that process and then we will bring it back at a future school committee meeting. Ming Chen, did you also have an informational update?
Yeah. So I want to actually first thank Superintendent Olson for standing firmly behind Asian Americans given the increasing violence and attacks. And then last Friday's statement is really helpful. Now was actually a very well attended rally yesterday to raise awareness on this issue. Well, there are a lot of Asian Americans and also WA students, community leaders and the members attending. I would like to actually extend a sincere appreciation from our community. TAN DEI Committee will also actually talk about this on this coming Wednesday, which is today's, in two days. So based on my conversation with community members, we won't actually agree that Westford is a very welcoming town. And the Westford school system is pretty welcoming as well. One thing I heard the feedback from the parents is that when we are talking about like returning to full in-person instruction in the coming weeks, mental health and then social and emotional need upfront and the center in our effort. So one other thing which really would like to urge the school administration is to pay special attention to the social emotional aspects of the students, especially like spot some of the easy needs of some Asian American students to help students re-engage and participate. Westford is very welcoming and then our people appreciate that. And then to spot any issues to help out. And then sometimes we know that things happen, kids sometimes make mistakes. Let's actually make it like a moment we can all work together. The other concern which I heard from some of the parents is that there is a misconception which basically equates like Asian American students as high academic achievers. But a lot of times this may not be the case because nobody was born with actual capabilities or abilities. Asian kids may very much like participate in the community supports and other venues. So sometimes the symbolismistic view neglects the struggles and the sacrifice of Asian American families. A lot of them in this town, they're first generation Americans coming to this country with a needle or nothing, coming to the country, and then they're just trying to do the best for their kids. So Asian American students want their effort to be recognized, to be treated fairly in college concerning college and the mission and workplace advancement. Again, I really appreciate the message from this town, from superintendent, from select board, from TAN DEI Committee, from this committee. This is really, really, really very welcome town. And then everybody I talked to, they say this is the best place they could ask for. So I really appreciate that.
Really well said, Ming Chen. Thank you. And please absolutely let us know if you feel that there is anything that this committee can do to lend support. I'm sure the school administration and building leadership and teachers will absolutely be sensitive to social emotional needs of all of our students as they're returning. And please, if there's any specific supports that you think would be helpful, please keep the lines of communication open. I think that's amazingly important, but thank you for all of your words. Very well said. Is there, is there anything else from the committee? We do have a resident who has asked to speak live and has a question. So if no one else is waving a hand at me, Chris, thank you for promoting her. And Elizabeth, you are welcome to ask your question. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, thank you Gloria. So my question tonight is, oh, do I have to say my name? Elizabeth Almeida, 41 West Street. I would like to know for the public, what is the status of Mike Colson's employment with the district right now?
Elizabeth and residents, Mike is still on leave. That matter is still a legal matter. There have been some continuations of hearings. And you know, I can't, as you know, I can't say anything about a personnel matter, but he is not in the school buildings. And decisions will be made down the road. Once the judicial process works its way through, and that will be a little bit, a little bit longer than we had anticipated.
So is he getting paid? Is he getting his salary and benefits at this time?
Yes, he is. And I reviewed that with our labor council when the leave was first initiated. The reason for the payment is that the court proceedings have not taken place. There is no ruling from the courts at the present time and we're allowing him his due process.
So if this case continues for years, the district will continue to pay him for years of leave? Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that. What I'm looking at is a decision based on what's happening now and before the end of the school year. As you know, I will be retiring at the end of the school year. I'm sure the school committee and the new superintendent will be addressing it if it does continue into the next school year. But like everything else, Elizabeth, it can't go on indefinitely.
Good, good, because I don't know if the public's aware of how many times it's been continued already. And that's why I'm concerned with the length of time we may continue to pay him. And just, you know, in consideration of all the budget concerns we all have, you know, I'd rather that money be going to a teacher who's, you know, working and in the building. So that's my concern, just wanting to make sure that the school committee and you are on top of it, so we're not paying someone a day longer than necessary. But my other part of that question is, do we have to wait for these court proceedings to conclude? Because this could go on for months and years. And the information that I've heard, I don't know how much access you have to police records. Clearly, staff members are let go without, you know, criminal, a criminal offense. So my question is, how long, how severe does it have to be like before some action can be taken?
Well, once we get a little bit more clear path before the end of the school year in terms of the pace of proceedings, our labor attorney will be meeting with myself and the school committee to advise us. And whether we need to take a change of course or not, but we, you know, I absolutely need to have us follow the guidance, as you know, of our labor attorney.
And I respect that and I understand that. I just, I know the public has questions. I have questions. I think we're all concerned about the town's bottom line. And I think, you know, I'm not asking for any, anything to be shared here that, you know, clearly you can't share, but just expressing on behalf of numerous residents are concerned that someone's being paid. And if you have information, that action can be taken to save the town money. I would hope that that would be taken, that action would be taken sooner rather than later.
Completely understand, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Thank you, Gloria.
Absolutely. Thanks for joining us, Elizabeth. Totally, totally understand and respect the concern. Thanks for coming to talk to us tonight. I'm not seeing anything else in the airtable at the moment, so I believe we're ready to proceed with the budget discussion.
All right, thank you. Chris, I believe you have the slides. If you could start with that.
Valerie, did you have a question before we get started?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that we try to focus on just any new information in this because I just feel like we have such limited time for this budget discussion that I would wait to review any previous information until the end maybe.
Well, I think the plan that we discussed is we are going to set the table for where we are and how we got here and what the, what the priorities are and how this proposed budget meets those priorities. But we're absolutely going to have plenty of time for any, any questions from committee members or the community. That's why this is a budget specific meeting. So we will absolutely have that time.
Chris, if I could have the next slide, please. I wanted to, as you said, Gloria, set the stage here for you and the public once again in terms of how this budget was constructed. Because our initial appropriation increase from the town manager was projected at 1.4%. Now with the Student Opportunity Act monies that were approved by the legislature for this year, that is up to about 1.6%, but while I've been here, probably represents a historical low in terms of appropriation increases and also to other town departments that have even a less of a percentage increase. But it's because of the steep and perilous drop in revenues with the federal, state, regional, and local level because of the pandemic. So we very methodically reviewed our strategic plan. We took input from you. You had expressed your priorities some time ago, early on in the, very early on in the budget process. We talked with the leadership team several times. We talked with all of the staff. Well, the staff who participated in meetings with Carrie and I and Ingrid Nielsen when Ingrid was here, we wanted to hear the comments from the staff in terms of what they considered to be priorities. And that was from pre-K through grade 12. We had two listening sessions with families. I looked at all of the schools' school improvement plans from each and every school. I took a look at, although there's no official report, some of the preliminary information in the town and school safety task force. That's the TSSTF that you see there. If there was going to be any impact on next year from COVID pandemic. You know, I wanted to hear from the COVID Advisory Committee also, and we've been hearing, as we've been going along from them every two weeks, recommendations and advice. And I asked the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee also what they felt were priorities, given limited resources for fiscal 2022. And when I distilled all of those inputs down, it came out to five top priorities. And that is maintaining class size at a guideline of 22 to one. Keep in mind, that's an average at the elementary level and 25 to one at the grade six through 12 level. The fact that we need to do a better job in addressing the social emotional wellness issues of students. I have repeatedly heard from classroom teachers, particularly at the elementary level, about students who are coming to school and either acting out their issues or withdrawing, which is equally if not more concerning. And so we've tried to address that. The diversity, equity, and inclusion, we are looking to, to really bring more diverse topics and authors and perspectives to our school system, to not only the curriculum that we have in a number of areas throughout our school system, but also materials and supplies, classroom reading materials, and also library supplies. That we want to continue, given the nature of the use of technology and the expansion this year for all students. We need to make sure we have adequate technology support and continue to have adequate technology support. And we have talked unendingly over the years about the need to budget for facilities corrective and preventive maintenance at a level at least more commensurate with what the actual need is. We still have not reached that goal in the fiscal 22 budget, but we have addressed it. Now, some people are asking, okay, well, how can you address some of these things with one of the smallest budget appropriation increases that you've ever had? And I'm going to go through that at this meeting. But keeping in mind, one of the issues is the salary reset in terms of our staff. We made reductions based on enrollments for this current school year, which is reflected in a lower salary base going into FY '22, along with several other sources of additional funds that we historically use. So Chris, if I could have the next slide. So in terms of class size, I'm pleased to be able to say that there are currently no reductions to staff other than readjusting numbers of classes at the elementary level based on grade enrollments. So we may be having an increase of a teacher or two in one grade level in a particular school, but offset by a decrease of a teacher or two in other grade levels. And so we readjust that each year to make sure that we don't carry too many staff. On the other hand, we don't carry too few staff, but we readjust the numbers so that we can, we can adhere to the class size guideline of 22 to one, particularly at the elementary level. I've added two and a half adjustment councils, as you know, to the budget. That in combination with a point five that we currently have at the elementary level will give us three adjustment councils that will split between the six elementary schools. Okay? Now, most of that is paid for with the Student Opportunity Act funds. Those are funds that I had to apply for that you approved at the last school committee meeting last week. And we informed the ESE that you, you did approve the application for two adjustment councils with the Student Opportunity Act money. The SO2, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, require us to spend $10,000 on social emotional wellness. And so we're spending $10,000 towards the other point five adjustment council. And the remainder of that salary will continue in the general fund. So Chris? In terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion, this is, look, this is just a start. This is the tip of the iceberg that we have allocated $25,000 for classroom materials and library resources. The DEI Committee will be making some recommendations on classroom materials and library resources. We've also budgeted and specifically identified $3,000 for consultants for DEI professional development. Just to let you know, on May 4th coming up, that's the town election day, we have a full day of professional development that focuses on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am freeing up about eight staff members this Wednesday. If you recall, Wednesday is a half PD day in the afternoon. We're freeing them up in the morning also with substitutes because I want them to work all day. They're planning to work all day on the May 4th Professional Development Day so that it's quality and it's impactful to the staff. In terms of technology support, we had to add, because of the large volume of technology deployment this year, the staff and students, we had to add this current school year a full-time assistant technician. And when we do this, we sit down with Mike Wells and we review the staffing of the technicians because Mike has been always very much involved with us in discussions of where we may need some technician help. And we've increased two current assistant technicians to full technicians. I will tell you that these two particular individuals have probably saved us two to three times their salary in terms of the work that they are doing. One in particular is doing extensive technology repairs that we ordinarily would have had to contract out to an outside vendor, or we would have perhaps had to discard the particular piece of equipment. And so we were a real crack a jack person in one of those roles. So Chris? In terms of special education services, you know, we've requested a point four FTE school psychologist. We had to hire a, the REACH program is the program for autistic children. We had to hire a person in this current fiscal year. These are positions that we don't have any, any choice or any latitude. And it's our ethical obligation to provide those services to students. We will need an additional special education teacher at the Robinson in our meeting with the teachers. That was absolutely a priority at the Robinson School and that has been confirmed by Courtney Moran. Okay. Because I always like to obviously check in with Courtney to see if in fact those requests are borne out by the numbers that she is in possession of also. We'll also need an additional special education teacher at Westford Academy with the increasing numbers coming up from the middle school. As you know, we are budgeting a full-time licensed practical nurse to remain with a student who is very medically complex at the Miller School. That's virtually all day coverage, including transportation coverage with the nurse. We have to budget a point five LPN. Now, this is, so we're waiting to see if the state will grant us a waiver on this or not. This is a district-wide nurse that is necessary to meet the required nurse-to-student ratio for the delegation of the administration of medication in a school system. Now, we've been lucky enough to have a waiver once or twice, but we're not sure if that's going to apply to next year. So we had to budget it just to make sure that we at least had a person in there. And if we, if we can delete it down the road based on a waiver from the Department of Public Health, we will. The next two positions, occupational therapist and speech therapist, both part-time, had to be hired once again in fiscal '21. And keeping in mind for, you know, on Thursday night, we'll mention to the FinCom and to the Select Board that these are positions that have to be financially recognized, appropriately recognized in our budget for fiscal '22. Chris? In terms of facilities and maintenance, we have added $115,000 to fund more responsible maintenance activities. We'd like to get into some preventive as opposed to only corrective maintenance activities. As you know, this is an account that has been in a deficit position to the extent of several hundred thousand dollars for many, many, many years. And school committees have always said, Bill, can't we, can't we budget more money? And for many years, we weren't able to because, first of all, we didn't have as much alternative funding as we have had in the last five or six years. And secondly, I would have had to take it out of some other more priority area of the budget, such as staffing or programs. And Chris? This is an issue that you're going to be voting on this evening. The only fee that we are proposing to increase for next year is the school bus fee. All others will remain constant. We are proposing a $350 fee. Now, last year it was 275. This year it was supposed to be 325 if we had a conventional school year. And next year, we're unsure of the ridership based on the pandemic and how far the pandemic might extend and if it will extend into into next year. But we think that's a reasonably competitive fee also. There are we do a comparison each year, do some benchmarking. That seems to be right in the ballpark. There are some school systems that are four and five and 600,000, excuse me, four and five and $600 for a school bus fee. We have a graph in this in this slideshow also that shows that the bus fees pay for about 41.6% of the total cost of student transportation. Chris? Here's the slide I was referring to just a minute ago. That here is the trend of the fees. Now, if you notice the down slope between 19 and 20, and that goes into 2021, actually into 21, that's because of the renegotiated contract, okay, with the bus company during this, you know, pandemic year into 20 and sliding into 21. So you can see the blue line is what is raised by fees, and it has been relatively constant for a long, long time. But busing costs are increasing. Okay, and we think the $350 is a fair price. Now, once again, that blue line represents about 41.6% of the total cost of of ridership per student. The red line, which is the amount of money in the general fund, is about 58.4%. So essentially, almost a 6040 split between the general fund and school bus fees. Chris? So how did we make the fiscal 21 budget happen? Well, first of all, the town manager's original appropriation, the 62,99,287,000. We have met that figure. We have been able to meet that figure by the amount of circuit breaker that we had planned on using for this year, the amount of revolving funds that we had planned to use, the IDEA grant, which is the largest special education grant in the nation, and that is of all of the grants across the country, that is the most stable of federal grants. That was 820,000, $820,000, and we use that to offset tuition costs. So the application of that is easily identifiable. There were some positions, some teaching positions that were funded in that IDEA grant in the past. They are now in the general fund, which makes it less precarious. And there is no precipitous drop in that grant. That grant is not going to go from 820,000 down to 500,000. Okay, it just isn't. It's been between 800,000 and almost a million dollars for many, many years. Now, the school choice monies, we have applied, and I'll show you the breakdown of school choice in in a in a minute. We've applied 345,000, $345,568. There was an initial application of 167,000, and then we applied another 148,568 to in school choice monies to make the budget work. We had the S R two funds, okay, which can now be used to maintain staffing. Now, this is a little bit of a risk as we have already identified in our budget discussions. We do think and we know that under the American Recovery Act, that there will be more money coming to communities. And I do believe in looking at the preliminary information, it would be similar to the S R two monies. But those are monies that we're using this year to to maintain programs and personnel. Okay? And then the last one, once again, is the Student Opportunity Act money. That is money that we just learned a few weeks back, that the town would be appropriating to us. And as I said, that is part of the Student Opportunity Act money that we will not see a large incremental increase in that between fiscal years, but there will be some indexing upwards, I do believe. So when you combine the town's general fund revenues and the the last block is the student opportunity, that's part of the Chapter 70 state aid. All right, so that's that's fairly solid as long as the legislature and the governor appropriate funds to it each each and every year. So those two sources, the first bar and the last bar are pretty much considered part of the general fund appropriation. From the orange to the green is, you know, offsets that come from alternative sources of revenues. And please understand that we are not unique in in using these types of revenues to supplement our budget. Many, many other school systems, if not all, do that also. So Chris? I wanted to give you an idea of where we have applied the S R two monies and the Student Opportunity Act monies in the budget. We've given you specific account numbers and locations so that that money is identifiable in in the full budget printout that the business office has has generated for you. So we want to make sure that we have full accountability, full transparency in terms of the use of that money, where it's going to and what it's being used for. Chris? The $60,000 savings from the curriculum coordinator consolidation has also been earmarked in the budget in respective accounts in terms of the science and math accounts in the in our budget. The town split of the $40,000 in the maintenance field supervisor position, that has been used to decrease the salaries in that that particular area of the budget. Now, the bus fees, we figure, and I want to be very conservative on this, we figured 2,200 riders. We generally we generally have between 28, 29, maybe up towards the 3,000 riders. But I've got to be a little bit careful and conservative for next year because we don't know what the future brings. You know, last year at this time, we all thought that this would be a normal school year, the 2021 school year, everyone would be back, everyone would be busting, and you know, look what's happened. We're able to budget to reduce the contract bid of the the bus contract. Once again, the reason that we were able to do that is because DBUS Company was the only bus contractor who bid. Now, we never know from one bid to the next, how many companies will in fact submit a bid. Two or three may pick up specifications, but they may not may not decide to to submit a bid. So since they were the only contractor and vendor who bid, we are able to negotiate with them. If we had another vendor who bid along with the bus company, but was not awarded the contract two and a half years ago, we would not be able to do this because we would have been changing then the rule of award for the initial contract. Courtney presented some materials, testing materials, and some Orton Gillingham reading professional development in the budget. She has since learned that there is a grant that has been funded by the DESE for the first time since 2017. She just made aware of that a short time ago, and so we're going to allocate the $13,695 to that grant. And the last item, once again, is the school choice money that you can see where the offset has been placed in the in the budget on that. And that that brings us up, you know, to the to the total of over 300. Let's see what I have in there for school. Choice, once again. That was over $300,000 when that was combined with 148 is combined with the 167 initial offset in the budget. So Chris? So this is just, we wanted to include in the packet also, it's just a summary by state function. Incidentally, over the next, I think it's April 5th, I will be presenting a a sequel to the School Finance 101. I focused on revenues in the first presentation. The next one will be budgeting, school accounting processes, chart of accounts, and expenditures. And what expenditures, what personnel, what material supplies and contact services are contained in certain areas of the budget? So, you know, we don't necessarily need to review these right now. We will be talking to the FinCom and the Select Board about, you know, any state functional changes that you see from one year to the next, from fiscal 21 to fiscal 22. This shows the 1.4% increase from the town. Keeping in mind that with the Student Opportunity Act money comes up to a little bit more than 1.6% now. Okay, because that money is considered part of the general fund appropriation. Then the last slide is sort of a benchmark slide. These are the categories that the DESE uses actually to compute foundation-level budget, they assign a particular value. But they also do a comparison, a per pupil cost comparison on these 11 state functions. And you can see that the state is in orange and Westford is in blue. The one area that we we do spend a little bit more on is pupil services. You look down to teaching also, it's 43.6% of our per pupil cost is spent on teaching services, direct student services. And that's about 5% more than the state average. You know, we're often asked, well, are you heavy with administration? Well, I think historically, this type of graph has shown that we're not. The state average is 3.2% of the state per pupil cost to educate pupils. And we're at 2.4% of our per pupil cost in terms of administration cost. There are some school systems, quite honestly, that have two, three, four administrators in in program areas that we have, we have one administrator. But what this graph shows, and I'd like to emphasize this from time to time is we are near the top in terms of performance of school systems. We are still in the lower 30% of school systems in terms of per pupil cost. Now, that raises the ire of some people, but I'm not pointing that that out as a criticism. You know, some years ago, one of the Select Board members got up at town meeting because we were recognized as the best bang for the buck of any school system in Massachusetts. And that Select Board member said if there was an efficiency award for education and for school systems, so Westwood would probably be right at the top. And and that's very true. We spend our money wisely, and that's what I like to point out about this particular graph. Yes, money is important and sufficient appropriations are important. But we could have a an appropriation that's $5,000 more per pupil. But if we waste that money in the way we spend it, it's not going to result in any academic or social emotional gain of our students. Okay? And I believe that is it. And with that, I will be glad to answer as many questions as I can. And I believe Gene is on with us tonight, Gene Savoy. And for those of you who in the public who don't know Gene, and Gene is our interim director of school finance for the remainder of this school year. And she is doing an excellent job with Anne Marie Nibokow and our and our business office staff.
Welcome, Gene. We appreciate the assistance. Okay, questions from the committee? I know I had a big picture question, which I think may may have also been addressed in the school committee written questions. But I know there have been some adjustments that have been made along the way. For example, the Student Opportunity Act and that adjusted the town's appropriation to the schools. So we were initially given a 1.4, but with those additional Student Opportunity Act money, what is our our current appropriation?
I believe it's 62%, if I recall correctly.
And and how does how does that compare to what other town departments are receiving?
Town departments are receiving less. They're at about a 1.03. So it's it's difficult for all departments.
I think that's that's just an important, you know, overall number for the public to keep in mind. The the other question I had was when I know this that this represented a shift in direction and approach with how we were addressing the budget gap now that we've taken the four-tier busing out of the equation and are using the S R two funds. In the presentation tonight, you've outlined specific light items for the S R two funds. And I think previously we talked about that those S R two funds were going to allow us to fund salaries. And I was just wondering what by the change in approach and how the S R two funds are being applied?
The way we apply them was also ineligible use. And what we didn't want to do is necessarily tie them to positions. But we had some money appropriated towards technology and other areas that that quite honestly would be critical if we if we weren't able to replace that. But it's less critical than staffing, whether it be at the elementary, middle or high school level. So that was a strategic choice that I had I had made. But essentially, what it does, keeping in mind for the public, it does save about six staff jobs because it's it's money that we otherwise would have had to use to cut areas.
Okay. So now those specific funds are tied to non-salary line items, but by the fact that we were able to do that, that enabled us to open up those operating funds to preserve those positions.
That's correct.
Got it. Other other questions from the committee? Sean?
Thanks, Bill. I was wondering if you could elaborate on the bullet point that was readjusting numbers of classes at the elementary level. Does that mean that teachers will be shifting grades or shifting buildings or what?
That's that's always a possibility, although it would be relatively minor this year. If at all, most of the shifts sometimes happen within a school. For example, the Abbott School will probably need a couple more staff members in one of its grade levels, but less less in another grade level. So those are people who won't necessarily be lost to the school system because in moments, sometimes we have anomalies. Sometimes we have very large classes that come through. And the next year, you'll have a class that's got 30 fewer or 35 fewer students. And so you you try to leverage your staff and move them to the area of greatest need. So there will be that process. And keeping in mind, my enrollment projections are based on the cohort survival ratio methodology. The ratios of students progressing, historical ratio in the last five years, progressing from one grade to the next. Once again, the kindergarten enrollments are based on the same on the number of births. And then the cohort survival ratio, five years later, in terms of numbers of students that are showing up in kindergarten. So it's always a juggling act. And the key is to try and maintain reasonable class size so that we don't have one group that's got 16 to one and another group that's got 25 to one.
I guess what I'm asking, Bill, and thank you, that was really helpful, is is are there current plans to move teachers or we won't really know until we get closer to the summer, right?
We need a little bit longer. We have do have some retirements that are coming also. And so what we generally do is about mid-April, we begin to talk with the leadership team, the principals, about what the enrollments look like at this time and what the projected staffing will look like. So those people will all be informed long before the end of this school year, if they're for anyone who's impacted.
And and part of that we have to do under the contract, right?
Yeah, although it's it's that is not necessarily a reduction in force if we're able to shift them. If we're if they're losing a job, that is a reduction in force, and that involves a bumping based on licensure and seniority.
Gloria, I have one more. Sorry, I don't mean to take all the time. Sorry, I don't mean to take all the time. And then lastly, Bill, is the current plan to keep the preschools at what, Miller and Nam?
Yes. There, those have worked out very successfully in talking with the staff. I think some of you might have, might remember going through the buildings also. The staff feel very much part of our school community now. With that progression from preschool to kindergarten and up through first and second grade at the, at the pre-K through two levels, so they will stay there.
Thank you.
And, and they're at Robinson as well, correct? All three, all three K2s have preschools?
That's right.
I, I actually had a follow-on to what Sean said, so I'm gonna cut in. You talked about the timetable for making adjustments based on enrollment. Once we have better ideas about enrollment, will we follow the same timeline for making decisions on school choice? I know we had talked about increasing the number of, of school choice students that we accept, but also, again, need to wait to kind of see what those enrollments look like, to see what grade openings we might have. So what would the, the timetable on making that school choice decision?
Timetable on school choice will be a little bit more into May than April. What the DESE requires is that school systems send a letter to them no later than June 1st, in terms of their intent for any additional school choice students. Keeping in mind that those students who are in the Western Public Schools through the school choice program have a right to remain here. You know, we cannot make any decision to make them go back to their home, home district. Now, I, I am, and I have checked with the principals already, checked in with them last week, just to give me a preliminary idea in terms of who might be able to accept a one or two or three students. So I do have that information, but I need to go a little bit deeper into the year.
So current students can remain, and we'd know, you know, more closer to the May timeline prior to that June, whether we'll be increasing the number and, and potentially accepting additional school choice students?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I saw some other hands. Ming Chen? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, that, it's, it's really tough in Zoom, like to, to figure out whether you're on Zoom or not, unmute or not. So for the revised budget, we're, we're carrying the $889,000, but I remember that in your original budget, the difference is like 900 something? So is the revised budget actually actually close all the gaps, or we still have gaps?
We, we don't have any gaps, Ming Chen.
Okay, yeah. The other question I have, you back, in the last year, because we have the hybrid and the remote lending academy, so we have technicians and then two part-time. And then when we go into like FY '22, do we expect that we're going to have the same level of technology support leads? Where we're in this like weird hybrids and remote lending mode?
I, I think the fact that we have deployed many more pieces of technology throughout the school system, whether it's hybrid, whether it's full-time return or a combination and remote, we're still going to need, because we have been understaffed with technicians. Keeping in mind, remember, we, we eliminated the digital learning specialists about two fiscal years ago. And we found that one of the reasons why we did not place, replace the digital learning specialists is that we found through talking with the teachers at many levels, grade levels, that there were actually more in need of technician help than DLS help. And so that's why we diminished the number of DLSs, and we've increased the number of technicians.
Thank you.
Valerie. First of all, I had a question about just understanding what needs to be firm for our Thursday budget hearing, because I know we're also scheduled for April 8th or something.
Yes.
Two meetings, right? So can you just clarify, like, why the vote happens tonight for the first meeting?
Well, I think it's very important for us to go into Thursday's meeting with an approved budget, so it's not somewhat of an amorphous process that will continue. I think we, we have established, and that's why I wanted to start at the, sort of the balcony level tonight, in terms of what were the identified priorities by all the stakeholders that we engaged in conversation with? How did we address those priorities? And I think we've done a, a good job doing that. And so I, I do think there's a lot to be said about going into the Finance Committee in the Select and saying we have reviewed this budget thoroughly. We have addressed the priorities that all of the stakeholders have indicated are of great significance. And we feel confident this budget will serve our students well. To do otherwise, leaves it, still leaves it open to, well, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? And not that there's a, not a place for that, but historically, we've always made it a point, Valerie, to go into the FinCom meeting with an approved school department budget.
I just wanted to express some concern about the increase to the bus fee. I, I guess I'm concerned about compounding that on last year's bus fee increase. You know, we, we increased it last year, but we haven't kind of seen that come to fruition in a normal year. And I'm worried about kind of bringing in more than we need and then ending up with extra in that revolving fund. And I, I just would like to see us go through a normal year with that new increase instead of jumping again.
And that is entirely up, up to you. You know, everything represents some degree of, of risk. If you maintain the 3, 325,000, does that put more pressure perhaps on our ability to, to fund the bus contract? Yes. But if we, if it is a 325, and instead of 2200, we have 2,800 registrations, maybe, you know, that fills, fills that gap. So one of the things I, you know, I obviously need to have you do tonight is approve fees for next year. I, I think it's probably safer to start out what I've recommended for next year, and as we go through the year before bus registrations start for next year, I think we'll have a better, much better idea based on ridership from April on of how strong our ridership will be next year. And if, if either I before June 30th, or Dr. Chu, as the new superintendent, would, would recommend to you that we can get away with three and a quarter, we'll, we'll do that. We just don't know that yet. So I think the safest thing to do is to stay with the 350 for right now.
So when I look at the original, the original, like, kind of stopgap measures to keep the three-tier, there was a, of course, now I can't find it. The, the bus savings that you negotiated for 395 was actually predicted lower, and we were using more school choice in that very first iteration. And I would feel more comfortable using, here it is. I would feel more comfortable using school choice for that $55,000 of the increased bus fee that, for next year. Because we didn't, it just doesn't line up for me that we didn't collect the full fee this year and then increased last year and haven't seen that play out in a normal year, and then would increase again on families next year.
I, I, I completely understand what you're saying. Absolutely understand. And if, if, you know, if the committee is so disposed to take that same position, I, if that's the will of the entire committee, I would say you may want to say 350, but with the ability to revisit that prior to the end of this school year before bus registrations start. It, it all depends on the level of risk that you're willing to, to go forward with. Jean, you ever?
I do have a comment that we can't use school choice money for busing because we're not allowed to bus the school choice students. So we wouldn't be able to use that as a direct substitute. We'd have to move salaries or some other thing and, and use some of the general fund budget to cover the additional bus fees. And this year, the, I don't know that we ever actually collected three and a quarter. I think we went right to the 150.
That's correct.
Sorry, that's what I meant. When I, when I say use school choice, I just meant offset.
All right.
Thank you for that clarification, though, Jeanie. No, it's.
Totally understand what you're saying, Valerie.
Avery?
So I, I hear what Valerie is saying, and I, I understand that we need to balance not doing the four tiers and increasing the fee slightly. Where I have the big concern is not necessarily on a single child, but on the family who has multiple children. And is there any way we can bring down that family cap a little bit more than, I think you have it at 900 right now?
That's right. Yeah, I, if, you know, I, I don't have a big problem with bringing it down to like 850. Because I know it's a struggle for families.
Right.
The 900 was based on the 2,200 and how many of the 2,200 ridership would be multiples, but I don't think there's a significant difference of $25 in the family cap. So I, or $50, excuse me. So I, I would not have a problem if you voted to, to make the family cap 850.
Is that what it was going to be this year?
It was, I, I believe it was going to be 850 this year.
Yeah, I was more comfortable holding it there and increasing an individual. I understand what Valerie's saying, though. There's, this is a big jump for families. But I also have seen how much it costs us to transport the kids and we're not, we're not, we're still paying the large, the lion's share of that. I see Jean's face. Yes, we're, we're paying the lion's share of that transportation cost.
Right, about 60% of it.
Yeah, I, I would, I, again, I, I recognize what you're saying, Valerie, is that families may not have seen and realized that increase this year, but but that was what was budgeted for this year, and we were able to, to give families who were using the buses this year a break, because we also realized we were operating in the hybrid model. And we were able to make that adjustment to help families this year, but we have that bus fee of the two, the, the 325 was supposed to have been in effect this year. So we can't pretend that that number didn't exist when we try and, you know, carry forward into the budget for next year. And we got a very, very loud, resounding message from the community that they did not want four-tier busing, and that they were willing to pay an increased fee if they did not have to endure the, some of the difficulties of four-tier busing with the potential increased childcare costs and, and family disruptions that four-tier busing would have caused, caused. So I, I do think this is, you know, a modest increase over what it would have been this year. I do think that's in, you know, in recognition and of, of what the community was asking for. So I, I don't think it's unreasonable. I also, I see Avery's point about the cap, because for, for families with multiple children, it does, it does add up fast. So I'd be curious about other, other thoughts from other committee members on the, the fee question, on the baseline fee and also the cap. Alicia?
I would definitely support holding the cap at 850, I think. As you, as you increase exponentially, the burden does become larger on larger families. I also think that a lot of careful planning has gone into offsetting not doing the four-tier, and that includes dipping into the school choice in a way that we are making a, a calc, we're taking a calculated risk here. And I want to be sure that we're not overcalculating that risk to the rest of the budget. So I have to agree with everything Gloria said. I understand that it is given this year. It looks like a stark increase, but it was as part of the plan of increases. And it is still far less than what the district pays per child to transport. And if we're going to be, you know, if we're going to be offsetting by using things like more school choice, I think we have to be careful and responsible and offset in other ways too, so that we're not digging ourselves into a hole next year that we can't necessarily get out of.
Chris?
Bill, do you, do you remember the number of projected families that would be hitting the cap, just so we have a ballpark on what the difference would be total?
I don't have, I committed to memory. And I don't think Jean would, Jean's been here, you know, not long enough to know that, but I can, I can, I'll look at that first thing in the morning to provide that to you. I'm sorry, I don't have that exactly.
I mean, I don't think it would be a substantial difference to the bottom line, right? So if that had to be offset elsewhere, school choice, for example, I, it's not a huge impact, I'm guessing?
No, it's, it's not. No. And I'm sorry, you know, that's one of those, I can tell your ridership, I can tell your fees, I can tell you mostly, it's just, that's the number of, I, I don't have committed to memory.
And it's projected too. So, I mean, it, it's based on a best guess, based on the pasture. Thanks.
Right, and depending on what ridership is, if ridership is greater than, than the conservative number we're, than we're projecting, that, that might balance out.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if, if we're really looking at that tonight, that we have some ballpark sense of, at least order of magnitude, what, what the impact would be.
Well, the, the impact from my experience, the impact of a family cap is less than the impact of lowering the per-student fee.
Did I see another hand? Ming Chen?
So, well, we were talking about the four-tier busing. I think Gloria, why they point out that a lot of families, they, they really want to keep the current schedule, and then I want to actually pay a little bit higher fee. So it's an increase of $25 over last year, is that correct? Or 50?
It's current year.
Okay, all right. So that, okay, so, so, so it's an increase of only $25, okay, instead of $50. Yeah, so, um, so that's still like only 40% of, of what we actually pay to transport every single student?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other comments? Just gotta give everybody else a chance before I circle back, Valerie. But sure, Valerie, you can make an additional.
Just while we're on busing, how many late buses do we use every year?
Use about five late, late buses. When we talk about late buses, I always like to refer to those after-school buses instead.
Sorry.
But we have about five of them, Valerie, each year.
Okay, I thought I saw four somewhere, but that, if, if five is the number we use, it's.
Yeah. Oftentimes, we'll use a fifth because of the extremities of town are so, there is such a great distance between down around Nagard Woods and up around Makepeace. So.
Other, other questions on busing or really the budget in general? Because the floor is open. Chris?
We've touched on this recently, I believe, but Bill, could you give us an overview of what happens to all the devices? Chromebooks that were purchased this year, what the plan is going forward?
The ones that were purchased this year will have, have helped reduce the numbers we're requesting for next year, and will be deployed to the students, so that we're not, we're not wasting machines. I've got, in fact, let's see, one of my folders I have, and I will send it out to you in the morning if you'd like, the, the initial number of devices that were requested and the revised number of requests of devices requested through the capital plan and the deployment of those. And so I can give you the specifics of that in, in the morning. It's just I have that in one of my files, in the folder in one of my files. So, but I do have that, and I'll be glad to give that to you.
Carrie, did you have additional information on that?
Yes, in a, in upcoming school committee meeting, you'll hear a little bit more about it, but we are looking, we purchased about 800.
you'll hear a little bit more about it, but we are looking, we purchased about eight hundred additional devices uh, with the um, COVID funds, and that was because every student went, went to World. So at the end of this year, those devices will only be one year old. So we are looking to begin tier, tiering down, T-I-E-R, down to start one-to-world at the sixth grade level. So all of those devices would be deployed relatively new devices, only one year old at the sixth grade. And then um, in moving forward, we've come up with a plan where um, starting in sixth grade and then again at ninth grade, that's when one-to-world will be infused. So we're looking to take this initial infusion to start getting over that initial hump of having to do that type of purchase um, at two levels. So we'll only be we'll be um, starting one-to-world in sixth grade next year. And then, as Bill mentioned, the remaining devices that are out there will continue to replenish the vi- the devices that are up for renewal at the elementary level.
Great, thank you for that added information. Um, any, any other hands, questions? Valerie.
Sorry, can I just circle back to the, what is it, after-school, after activity, after activity?
After-school activity buses, yes. You can call them late buses if you want.
Okay, um, that, that one just jumped out at me in the budget because it jumps to sixty thousand for next year. Um, and I know that, I asked that in the written questions, and the answer was that it's um, a jump in the um, bus bid. Yeah, it goes to, um, so this last year would have been a hundred dollars per day for an after-school bus. Um, this year would have been one twenty-five per day, and next year will be one thirty-five. But the part that had me confused was that the last couple years have, have been around twenty thousand. So if, if the numbers are from the bus bid, it seems like they would have been forty and fifty thousand, and then to this sixty thousand number. So I guess I'm just questioning if that sixty thousand um, is really reflective of um, actuals?
Uh, it is based on the bid and the number of vehicles. Let me see if I can um.
The bid definitely says sixty thousand, but my question is more of the, of the last couple years' actuals.
Because sometimes, I mean, sometimes the actuals are, are less, sometimes they're more. Uh, it all depends on, now this year, there would be definitely less because the, virtually are no activity, you know, after-school activity buses. Because mostly everything is uh, is remote. So um, if you'll allow me to, to make a note of that. The only reason why um, sometimes I'm, I take a little bit of time and want until the morning is because, you know, as for the public, this is the document, if it's about a hundred and twenty pages of our budget, I just need to go back into it and look at the actuals and make sure, you know, um, everything is um, all the information is here so that we can present that information to you. So if I can have until the morning, just to make sure, double-check that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I asked a different, another question, sorry, was there, do you want to go around again, or? Or should I keep going?
No, you, you can go, you can go ahead and do the next one.
Um, I asked a question in the written um, about the utilities um, between buildings. And the answer was about um, stricter energy codes, which was confusing to me because wouldn't those codes make our buildings more energy efficient? So I was, the, so what I was seeing in the budget was um, Miller and Stony Brook seem to be heating and electricity are more than their peer schools, and then custodial services are more.
Yeah, we're looking at the utility consumption. We started that last year. Uh, that sort of jumped out at us, uh, those two schools, mostly at that time, Stony Brook. In terms of what is it that is causing that now? You know, the, the sewage treatment plant over there is on a, I believe on a separate meter, so I don't believe that would come into play, but Paul Fox is taking a look at that. He uh,
We spoke earlier today, I, Paul and I did meet about this very issue earlier today. And um, I've gone to several of those, uh, when they open a new school and you're part of an MSBA project, you're invited to go and visit the new school. And everyone says that when new school, it's gonna be energy efficient, it's all green and all that. They're, they're finding all the new schools cost a lot more because in terms of the stricter codes, it's for the air cleaning in and out the buildings, and the equipment that's used to run those takes a lot more energy. And now when we put the MERV higher energy filters in all those, it even causes it to work even hotter. And there's all kinds of new technology throughout those buildings that the older schools do not have. And it's not unusual for the newer schools to have higher energy costs.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Avery.
So I had a question, I think it was in the, the list of questions that we've had. But i- if someone were looking through the, the budget and saw travel costs and conference fees and those kind of things, they might rise in a, an eyebrow to that, given that nobody's going anywhere anymore, and we're doing everything on Zoom, and so everything is remote for the most part. I mean, I know that that could change in twenty-two. But can you just give an overview as to why there is still travel and conference? I mean, fees, yes, but travel, food, some of that stuff is still.
You know, that, that has been a longstanding, uh, some longstanding items in our budget. You know, even uh, the MasQ content, uh, conference, which is a major computer users conference. I know our digital technology specialist has um, has been at uh, one or two others that are national conferences and come back with some great ideas. Uh, it's monies, there are monies in the individual principals' contracts and administrators' contracts. But we include a little bit more in the system-wide accounts for things like the American Association of um, you know, curriculum directors who, that holds a conference, American Association. The um, AAS, A, American Association of School Administrators. We don't do a lot of conference traveling, but there are some that people will say, whether they're local or in-state or in New England or in the eastern part of the country that they would like to go to. What they have to do is fill out a conference attendance form, and a leave request form, and Carrie reviews it, and I review it to see if it is relevant to what they're doing and their role and their function in the school system, and if it has benefits to students and or staff. Carrie, I don't know if you, uh, if you have any perspective on that, that you want to share or not?
No, I mean, much of it too is contractual in um, the administrators' contracts. There's a set amount for these, and, and looking ahead, um, I know that the MAS conference in July is looking to have some onsite, um, that's held in Hyannis area. So I do think that things will be starting to open back up. If there's any sort of savings because people can't end up traveling, then that would be one of the savings, but it wouldn't um, be appropriate to remove it from the budget in advance of next year for those reasons.
Thank you. There was also um, one uh, question from the public comment from uh, one of our FinCom members, Christina Green. She was asking, um, do we know what the FY twenty ending balance will be in the transportation revolving account?
I assume she's referring to FY twenty-one?
Yes, FY twenty-one.
Uh, not, not as of yet. We have to go a little bit deeper into the fiscal year before we will know that with greater level of certainty. It, it's like some of the questions that were in the FinCom, uh, and maybe perhaps some, some of the school committees, what's the balance, or what do we expect to be the balance in utilities and heating costs? We just don't know just yet. Particularly with the utilities, that billing, Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, that billing is at least a month in arrears to the actual consumption, so that it takes a little bit of time to, to understand.
That is correct, because it was based on meterings that we don't get until, then they recalculate them and send them out to us until after the month is over. So we get, we'll be getting, in July and August, we'll be getting the bills for June.
Do, do we have, uh, do we have any, any information that we can provide, um, Christina Green about the status of that uh, transportation revolving account now, or where, you know, our best guess projection is? I know everything's changing in April, though, um, with the, the full return.
We had, we had provided that information at the last school committee, do you know?
That was in, that was in the school.
Yes, it was. Yes, so in the transportation, uh, at, at the balance, at the end of, at, on, actually March first, was two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay. But that's, yeah, obviously gonna be lower by the end of the school year.
And for the FinCom members or any of you, uh, if you recall last week's presentation, in the last couple of pages, were the revolving account balances as of, as of now?
Okay, great. Thank you for that reminder. I, I knew I, I'd seen it someplace recently, so thank you um, for that clarification. I'm sure if um, anyone from FinCom has additional questions, they'll get their chance on Thursday. So um, how, um, how about other committee members? I'll double-check the airtable and see if there's anything new. Um, but committee members, why don't you see if you have other questions? Uh, Valerie.
I had two um, in the list of the written questions that didn't get addressed, um, so I don't know if you have, will have this information offhand. But there was a line item in instructional equipment for classroom furnishings that was twelve thousand the last two years, and I was just wondering, after years of zero, um, if that was the specific planned expense?
We, we have pulled the detail.
Zero has, um, you know, effectively eliminated our, our ability to do that, so that we want to make sure that we budget it, uh, you know, more appropriately. Let me just get your question, Valerie.
I'm in section twenty-four twenty, if that helps.
I did find the list of all the parents, and I tried to quickly go down the sheets and count, but it's, this is kind of small and confused, Bob. When I get into the office tomorrow, I'll be able to run it and manipulate it into some kind of numbers of the number of families who would hit the cap.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just searching for that information in our printout. I'm sorry, what line were you referring to?
Uh, it's the very last one. It's classroom furnishings, S-wide, so I, I assume system-wide, and it's zeros for several actual years, and then jumps to twelve thousand last year, and twelve thousand again this year.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that certainly we wanted to identify those needs for replacement furnishings, uh, or specialty furnishings that are too small to, in terms of quantity and price per unit, to ask for in the capital plan. Um, I'll tell you what, what some of this is for, is some of the um, desks with the uh, the upright desks that children now enjoy, some children enjoy standing at with the moving foot uh, foot path that allows their feet to swing a little bit. And a little bit more soothing to them. Uh, we have those uh, circular tables, kidney tables are always in order also, uh, so that we didn't want to continue with having zero in those funds, but knowing we haven't had a need. So we wanted to appropriately recognize what we thought would be an approximate expenditure for replacement furnishings or new furnishings for the buildings.
Was anything purchased for, under that line item this year?
I think most of it was under the CARES Act money.
Yes, I think so.
Uh, because that was the first, uh, if we needed something, it would have been in response, more likely, more than likely to the pandemic, and so it would have been an eligible expense under the CARES Act. We would have chosen to do that as opposed to sort of tax the general fund budget.
And um, I had another um, question from the written list about the district-wide custodial services. It shows one FTE for district-wide custodial services and one FTE for central office. Are those accurate? So there's one, one FTE, one FTE for the whole district, like a floater, and then one just for Millennium Building?
That, that's correct. Um, we have a custodian here, uh, we sometimes split that custodian with the Abbott School, also since the preschool is gone. But it's a full-time position, so, but we listed under, uh, you know, one location.
I just, so would the district-wide custodial FTE be split for the salary, like? Or would there be a separate line item? Cause I couldn't find that.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't necessarily be split. I've got to check, Valerie, I'll, I'll, um, let me check that particular designation.
On the list of questions, Bill, the two that Valerie is referring to are numbers forty-four and forty-five.
Okay.
No answers.
All right, thank you. Okay.
All right, so pending um, answers to some of, of these lingering questions, any, anything else from the committee? The, the two matters before us this evening, um, which um, the administration would like us to take votes on this evening are the overall fee structure, um, which we approve every year at this time. And then also the overall budget going into um, the first uh, FinCom hearing on Thursday. So um, any questions before we start that motion process? Uh, and, and if so, um, do, do we want to, um, do we want to take up, when we take up the fee motion? I, I think we need to get a sense from, from the committee or have someone put a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it on whether uh, how the committee feels about a potential adjusted um, bus fee and or bus fee cap. Because I think I was, I was hearing, at least from several committee members, possibly some support for the proposed fee at three hundred and fifty dollars, but potentially um, adjusting the family cap instead of what has been proposed at nine hundred, um, perhaps adjusting it to eight fifty.
Do you want a motion on that, Gloria?
Um, yeah, I think, I think we're, we're at that point.
Okay, so I would move that we keep the bus fees as proposed at three fifty per rider and reduce the cap to the original FY twenty-two cap of eight hundred and fifty dollars per family.
And.
I will second.
Okay, and we have a second, and to clarify the motion, Avery, is that, is that motion just pertaining to the bus fee? Or is that also approving all other fees as indicated?
Happy to amend my, my motion to include all other fees as indicated.
And I will second the amendment.
All right, thank you. So this would, this would be um, all fees as proposed with the, the only one being an increase, be the three hundred and fifty dollars per rider increase on the bus fee, but with the amended eight hundred and fifty dollar family cap. Any discussion on either the bus fee, the bus caps, or any other fees that are on this list? Chris?
Just to reiterate the point we made before, that change in the cap would have a resulting impact on the projected budget. So there would be presumably, if the numbers stay the same in offset, that would be required, which would, again, presumably be an increase, I, I, I assume, in school choice funds used to fill that, that hole.
We'd need that number at some point.
Right, so we're, we're sort of, we're sort of voting on it in absence of that projected number, which I mean, we could, again, we could, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's three hundred families, so you could do the math, you know, if we want to project that.
I don't think it's gonna be that high.
Yeah, I don't either.
I got down to the, I, I got maybe to the D's and I. I got down to the, I, I got maybe to the D's and I counted maybe 10 families.
Is that right? So maybe 100 families times the, the change in the cap.
So understandably, we're, we are ballparking that impact. But it also sounds like we're, we're relatively comfortable with the magnitude of impact we're talking about. Other questions, comments on that? Did I see a hand? Alicia, anyone else? Valerie?
I just wanted to reiterate that, that I'm against a bus fee increase for this year and will vote accordingly.
Any, any other comments prior to the vote? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Vote would be to Avery. I think you were on mute.
Hi.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi.
It's the Zoom problems. Alicia?
Hi.
Ming Chen?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Valerie?
No.
And I would also be I, so that motion passes, although not unanimously. The, the next motion would be a motion to approve the FY '22 operating budget as, as amended by the, the recent updates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so any additional comments, questions, discussions prior to a vote on the overall operating budget as proposed? I would, I would just like to say from a general comment that I do appreciate that there are some, I feel like, improvements to the way this budget has been organized. I know there are, you know, when you look at it, there are certainly some shifts that have caused some questions. For example, the large increase in administrative salaries, but that is indicated, is offset by the decrease in the student support leader salaries because we've merged those positions. There are some other, other changes that have been discussed in the written questions like increases to special ed tuitions in the operating, I'm sorry, special education salaries in the operating budget. But those are really because, not necessarily additional positions on some of those line items, but because we've shifted salaries from the IDEA to, to 40 grant to salaries, to the operating budget. So I know I didn't say that very clearly, but I think that does help, help clarify for the public. And we are putting these salaries in the operating budget where they belong instead of having them allocated to grants. So I think that is, that is an improvement to the way the budget is organized. I also appreciate that I think we are, we're funding and moving towards funding maintenance and facilities at a more appropriate level because that is usually an area where we are under-budgeted and overspent. So I, I really do appreciate it. I think there are some improvements to this budget. I also really do appreciate that the, the administration did go back to the drawing board when there was a community response to the four-tier busing proposal and, and came up with an alternative pathway to closing this budget gap. And this was not an easy budget gap to close. I, I have only been on the school committee a short time, but I know we have seen the, you know, 15-year history. And I don't think that, that we've ever had to deal with, with a budget increase, you know, percentage increase of this number. So quite, quite a testament to all of the leadership team and administrative team that has made this possible, to make this budget work without a dramatic loss to either staff or programs. So I do appreciate all of the efforts that went into the formation of this budget. And I just felt like we needed to kind of sum that up, I think, before taking such a big vote. Any other comments, questions prior to the vote? Okay, and the vote is to Avery.
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Alicia? Alicia, you're-
Hi.
Thank you. We definitely got a little robot Alicia going on tonight, but that kicked-
Hi. Sorry.
Thank you. Ming Chen?
Hi.
Sean?
Hi.
Valerie?
Hi.
And I, so that would be unanimous approval for the budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the due diligence that you've placed in the review and the questions that you asked. Valerie, I knew I wasn't going to go home tonight without answering that question on the system micro-storing. That's our courier who, who brings all of the materials to around the schools. And, you know, the commodities, all of the office supplies that are transported, small furnishings, the mail, and so that person is going full-fill all day long. And so that's, that's that system-wide position. I just, I did want to clarify that to you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Any, any other discussion before we take a motion to go into what I believe should be a brief executive session this evening? Seeing nobody waving at me furiously, Alicia, I think the motion to you, if your audio is working.
If my audio is working. Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to Unit A collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not return to public session.
Okay.
And all in favor, Avery?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Alicia?
Hi.
Ming Chen?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Valerie?
Hi.
And I, so that is unanimous. We, we will be adjourned to executive session. The committee will not return to public session this evening, but we will return to public session next Monday night. And we will see you next Monday night for our regular meeting to cover a whole gamut of topics. And we will see you then. And of course, we will be in session on Thursday in joint session with the Select Board and FinCom for our budget hearing, if you'd like to join us there as well. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Good night.